This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on Ivan, the Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call. Councilwoman Toles here. Councilwoman Williams is absent. Councilwoman Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed. We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing to allow anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of resolutions assessing nuisance abatement lien against property. This is for grants cutting works that have already been performed. No council action is necessary regarding 230, 2613 East Broad Street in District 1, 311 Elmwood Avenue in District 2, and 525 Evans Street in District 3, also in 227 Heinz Road and 711 Slack Street because of new owners. So therefore we have 29 resolutions. The Clerk will call forward the names of those who have filled out form indicating they wish to speak. Alrighty, the first item that someone was here, it's item number two, 111 North 7th Street, and Shelley Furch wished to speak about that one.
Okay, I've never done this, so I don't know what I'm doing, but there is a land sale contract on this and I have it here. I spoke with Brian Harbison, or actually I didn't speak with him, I left him a voicemail and then his assistant had sent me something telling me that she wanted a copy of this. It is my fault, I didn't get it to her. My attorney actually had it because we actually have an ongoing lawsuit against Ms. Sander Beck about her properties and stuff. So my attorney had it and then of course, out of sight, out of mind, I forgot all about sending this to Brian.
Okay.
Do I need to send it down?
Okay, this appears to be a land sale contract.
Correct.
Where Furch Property Management is selling.
I am the secretary of Furch Property Management.
Okay, alrighty, and so the property is going to a new owner?
Sander Beck. And I have sent her every notice that I've ever gotten from the City of Gaston, I have either emailed her or and/or texted her. So she's very much aware that there was, and I even have proof on my phone, I didn't print it out, but I have proof that I even sent her stating that there was a $250 charge and she didn't get it taken care of immediately and she ignored that also evidently because here I am now.
Okay, Mr. Harbison, would you like to review the document that she has? Our city attorney also had another meeting and he's not going to be able to be here this afternoon, but I told him that we could refer any legal questions to him to answer for us at a later date.
I was just telling Mr. Harbison, I even have invoices from my attorney showing that we do have an ongoing lawsuit against Ms. Beck.
And this process actually started in 2011?
She has been purchasing since 2011, yes. She's been, the North 7th, actually she only owes like 4,000 more on it, but she's not maintaining it and she actually has two, I have two properties. The other one is the one that I'm actually having a lawsuit against, but they're both kind of tied together because.
Who's actually paying taxes?
I pay them, she, it says on there, she basically is prorated, like she pays me but then I physically pay them.
So you get the notice every year from the city about?
Correct, because I have the deed.
And then what do you do, you pass it on to her?
When I get the notices, yes, I either text her and/or email her, and I do have proof where I've done that.
But she's not a recorded owner anywhere.
Right, because I own the deed. I have the deed on it until she gets it paid in full for this agreement, I still hold the deed.
So this is a lease purchase property?
Yes, they call it a land sale.
But it's not a, it's not a recorded lease sale property. I don't know what law would say on that.
We might want to table this one and then let the city attorney, we need to give him a copy of what you have here.
Okay.
So when we complete the meeting, if you'll come to the fourth floor, we'll make a copy of that for Mr. Harbison as well as our city attorney.
Okay, alright, so just wait till the end?
Uh huh, yes. And Madam President, I don't, do you want to let everyone speak first or would you rather deal with these as they come up?
Just let everyone speak first.
Sorry, didn't know where I put my stack of papers here. The next address that has someone that wished to speak is item number 13. The address is 209 Brown Street, 209 Brown Street, Edward Turner Jr. and also Jimmy Conwell, both people were interested in speaking about this one.
To the Council President, members of the council, I am Edward Turner Jr. I am a deacon at Antioch Missionary Baptist Church. We are, Jimmy Conwell and I, speaking in opposition of this property being cut by the City of Gaston. This piece of property was donated to the Antioch Baptist Church back in 2005. We cut this grass every year and during the month of June, every year, we have our vacation Bible school. So we always make sure that the grass is cut during this particular time. You know, we received a letter where the city said they cut it in May, June, and July of 2017, and we disputing that, that, you know, we have members of the church that cuts the grass now. And Mrs. Knuckle, she's passed away, I think about the last year, two years, she always notify Mr. Brown, it's the grass is getting a little hot. So you know, I mean, you know, we could have brought the grass cutting crew down here, but you know, we realize, you know, that you're only gonna let so many people speak, so I think. And also I would like to say that when the city sent the letter out, they said lots. And the reason they said lots, that these were small lots, they was 25 feet lots, and I went to the county to get a map, and on the county map it shows 317. And in the back of that, it shows that, you know, lot 24 and 25, which makes up other 50 feet. Thank you.
Jimmy Conwell, Antioch Baptist Church, and on the map that we have here, we have X's on the property that the church owns, and according to our letter, certain lots 24 and 25, that's not our property. Do you want to like to?
That's ours.
Oh, that is ours?
Yeah, 317.
317?
Yeah, that makes up the 50 feet.
But that's what they said?
Yeah. See, we always cut the lot that's next to Ms. Knuckle's house. Now some more vacant lots past the 50 feet that the church owns. The church only owns this 50 feet down on Brown Street. We owns the corner in the front where you first turn in on Brown Street. You know, they just accomplished this about four years ago from state.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Number 13 says 209 Brown Street, and the gentlemen are referring to 317 Brown Street?
No, sir.
I think those are the tax parcel numbers.
Right.
That he's referring to, he passed the map down.
All I heard was 317, I didn't hear the parcel.
That was the tax parcel.
And just to clarify, is your position that the grass was cut, it just didn't need to be cut, or that you're being charged for the grass being cut on a property you don't own?
Well, the city's saying they cut it, and we always cut that grass. It's all a part of the rest of the park area that we have, and this 50 feet was donated to the church. So you know, this 50 feet joins the land that's behind the church.
I understand, so.
I made a mistake about the 317, we do own that 317.
And, but just to clarify, is, are you saying that the grass was never cut by the city, or it shouldn't have been cut by the city because y'all maintained it?
We maintained. It seems mighty strange that all the other grass was cut and this 50 feet lot was not cut. You know, we maintained the park. I think it's a check some years ago that the city did have control of the park at the church, but then it was converted back over to the church, so we've been maintaining it there since.
And we have a cleanup every spring, where all the men get together, and we usually start around May, and all we do is work outside cutting grass.
Can I give y'all my address? Put it on the list?
Yes, sir.
We don't show, we, but I don't know if you can put up with our prices. But, but we do that.
You guys have a right.
We do.
And we do that, start every spring of the year, working at park and all our properties around there, and I said, you know, y'all see this guy with his bush hog out there? And last year, started our cleanup, I thought we were gonna start about 9:30, I got there a little after nine, and like everything on these broads had been cut and everybody gone with me.
Alrighty, we thank you gentlemen.
See, this is not the church, this is not the church, this is not the church, and this is not the church, but all this little one in here.
This is the property in question like that.
Right, right. 317, but if you look on the back, you see 24 and 25.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you keep it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, we're doing it. Is there anybody in favor?
Okay, this is a 2017 grass cutting, and we cut it, an initial letter was sent out April 11th, and we cut it May 12th of 2017, June 14th 2017, and July 14th 2017. And the legal description we're showing as being is 209 Brown Street.
Alrighty, the next one that people wanted to speak is item number 31, and it's 1105 Springfield Avenue, and the person is Gladysia Scott.
So just to be clear, I am disputing the fact that the City of Gaston cut my lot. I took, I bought this property in 2015, didn't get the deed until November, and so in November I had my grass guy to go in and clean it off because it was like really woody and stickly and all that. Of course, in November, doesn't have a lot of grass on it, but the property directly next to it is also my family's property. And so I have my grass guy to cut my mother's house, which is two blocks down the street, the house next to this property, and I also added my lot in, and my agreement with him is to do my grass from March to November every two weeks. And so I got the letter that they had cut my grass, and I called the city to dispute that they cut my grass because I knew I had just paid to have it done. And when I initially called, couldn't get anyone, left a message, a lady called me back and I guess she worked for Mr. Harbison and said that I needed to speak with the supervisor, which would have been him. And I left a few messages and I didn't get a response, and then he did email me back because I turned around and emailed, and I have the email right here if you need to see it. But part of my thing was the fact that my grass, that they're saying my grass is cut, my grass had been cut like three days before that on my two week schedule, and as well because the lot directly next to it is my family's property, which I have cut. I cut, and that was the purpose of me purchasing that lot because I'm renovating a house there, and that was gonna be one huge yard for me and my children. And so I told them if they had cut that lot, then the house that I'm working on should have needed cutting as well if they're saying it needed cutting. But of course, we've not received anything on the 1101 property. The 1101 property is technically two lots, so I guess it would be 1101 and 1103 as well, and 1105 is directly, it's all grass. And so I was disputing the fact that the grass was cut by the City of Gaston.
She's speaking on 31 1105 Springfield Avenue. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any of these resolutions? Would you like to speak in favor of 3115 1105 Springfield?
Yes, ma'am. The initial letter went out May 10th 2017, and we cut it July 10th 2017.
Madam President, we do actually have another location too that someone was here to speak in regard to. It's number 33, the address is 929 Tuscaloosa Avenue, and the person is Ray Oden.
I got this letter the other day that said they cut my, the grass at 929 Tuscaloosa Avenue in September, and I didn't know about it. I had got a letter earlier that year, and we had cut the grass and thought we was keeping it cut, but then we got, I got this letter saying it was cut in September of last year. And really I had two things that I wanted to bring out about it. One, I don't know why they couldn't have let me know that it needed to be cut. And two, I think they charged way too much because it's just a 50 foot lot, and they charged me $136, and I could cut it for $100 a lane, so I cut it myself. When I cut it, I usually cut it in 30 minutes easy. And so really that was my complaint, I felt like if, you know, if I'd have refused to cut it or something, I could see it, but you know, since I was trying to work with them, which I take it at least, called me and said it needs to be cut, and I also fight to charge me too much, that's my complaint, so, thank you.
Speak in favor.
The initial letter for that address went out on September 1st 2017, and we cut it on September 27th 2017.
Mr. Oden, do you live at this address? Mr. Oden, do you live at this address? Is this your home address? Is this property, property that you own?
Property that I own, that's property that I own, but I live in Gaston, we're not living in Gaston, and I don't usually go that way, but I'm not experienced, I don't And this is kind of the other thing, but I've been trying to sell that lot for quite a while, it seemed like a good setup, and I could have seen out there, I could have put a bus stop, pick up people, I didn't know anything about that. I don't really think I have the option.
Alright, well, thank you for the question. At this, at this time, I'd like to look at actions on, well, on the property at 111 7th Street North, the Furch property, we're going to table that until we have legal counsel on item number two. So we have an action item for number 13, we have an action item for number 31 and number 33. Let's go to the first action item, which would be 209 Brown Street, $256 Antioch Baptist Church. Madam President, let's go back to 111 North 7th. Let's go ahead and take a vote on that one if that's okay, since we know that tabling is the desired action on that one.
We'll make a motion to table for 30.
Second.
30 days?
Alright, Clerk, will you take the vote? Alright, we have a motion second to table for 30 days. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days. Alright, next action item is item 13, 209 Brown Street, Antioch Baptist Church. What is the, the lien was for $256 at this time. What is the pleasure of the council?
It's District 1, right?
I can't stand, that's my church.
What is your church? I'm still trying to get unwound on all those different lots. Let's put it on leave, you know, put it on leave.
I said we're just not charging them, if they've been cutting it and cut all the rest of the lot.
Well, yeah, but you know, until they unravel all the, seem like a strip.
What is your discussion? What is your discussion on it?
That is mine. I'm not ready to vote on it, I'm like, I might just stand.
Specifically?
Unwind it.
How?
Till it specifically show where each one I'm gonna cut. How about table along with that other? I'll put that in the formal motion.
Alright, do you want to put a timetable on your?
30.
30 days?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second to table for 30 days. Those in favor to table for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'll stand. And we have one extension, motion carries to table for 30 days. Our next action item that we're going to take would be 1105 Springfield Avenue, District 1. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I, you know, given that she, the emails she shared with the group there where she was responding back and forth with the, with the Public Works Department or with the Building Department, is, is there any chance that this is another one of those scenarios where it was an adjacent lot, because like she said, she's got three lots?
Yes, ma'am.
And also, I bought this lot from the state, and I had to explain with my mother also that one reason they may have assumed they cut it because they were used to cut it, because it was, the city was maintaining it before I purchased it, so.
Well, I, all due respect to Ms. Scott, but I, that's not the way the Building Department works, they don't just assume. I mean, they, if they've got a report that says they cut the grass, it's because somebody was out there and cut the grass. Now, I will give you, concede to your point that it's possible that the timing was off and in fact, they cut it when it was still state property before you took possession of it, that's a possibility, but they don't just go, well, we probably cut it. I mean, somebody was there standing on.
That's the other thing, at this point, my work is there.
Right.
But as well, like I said, I do maintain the lots directly adjacent to it, it's all, it's all there together, they're cut as one yard, and I do this because it looks nice to have it all looking bluey.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's all cut together, it's three lots that are cut as one yard.
I understand, and this, and this does happen from time to time where there's, you know, an opposing, like you said, your word against theirs. And what we did, just so you know, backing up a few, a little bit, we actually passed an ordinance earlier this year that will require all grass cutting to be accompanied by a photograph before and after the cutting. Yeah, so that's a good idea on your part, good fences make good neighbors, so you keep taking those pictures and moving forward, our Building Department are taking pictures of every lot, so hopefully we don't have to deal with this in the future, but we still gotta deal with this one right now.
According to this, and I think according to what she said, okay, you started November of 15. Cutting this?
I've maintained it ever since.
Right.
Okay, you said you maintained it.
I had it cleaned off in November because that's when I got the deed. I started the first of it in March, but I got the deed extra in November, so I asked him to go in and clean it off because it was very sticky, it had, I mean, it had a lot of sticks and.
In 2015?
And then when the springtime came along, I added that body in to be maintained along with the other lots that I was already maintaining.
Okay, but you're saying you started this, not the buying, the cleaning of it in 2015?
Yes, in November when I got the deed.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm inclined to believe, Ms. Scott, so I guess I don't know how to word this motion, or.
What you can do, you can make a, if you, you can make a motion to consider the resolution, and then if you don't think the lien should be assessed, you can vote no, and that might be the simplest.
We did that last week where we made a negative motion, not supposed to do that in Roberts Rule, so.
Right.
So we make a motion, then we vote either aye or no.
And if you don't agree with assessing the lien, you can vote no, again, you know, you can vote against the resolution.
We still, we still in discussion, I just wonder what happened y'all from last week. Last week the guy said he didn't cut it, and then we ended up charging this guy, now this week's come along, and it's vice versa, I mean, we just flipped around.
Well, the reason why we voted that is because Jan and Todd actually went out there and stood on the property, and Todd said they cut it, and not only Todd, but it's. And not only Ty, but the people that cut it. So, that was the difference.
But Jan's told us today, the days they
But they didn't go out there and stand on the property.
But she's told us the days they've cut the property. Is that correct, Jan? I'm just curious, just for my own sake, what was different from last week to this one, but, you know?
You know, Councilman Cannon, you're welcome to ask anything. And that's a good question. That's, I think every case stands on its own merit. I think last week, that case had its merit, and I didn't agree with it. I think this case has its merits. And I, and Thomas, Councilman Worthy, has a good point where Ty went and stood on the lot. I think it's possible that Jan and Brian are telling the truth. And I think it's possible that Ms. Scott's telling the truth. And I think it's possible that the public works employee that's out there may have made a mistake in this particular case. Not a blanket statement. I just think in this particular case. So, I mean, that's where, that's my, you know, playing Saul in the Bible where we got to split the baby. I mean, this is not an easy decision. I mean, I, you know, it's a hundred and thirty-six dollars or however much, but I take it like it's a million dollars.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Now, what is the pleasure of the council?
Well, I think according to the city clerk, we need to put the motion on the table. So, I make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
All righty, and the motion is to adopt. And if you don't agree with assessing the lien against the property, you would vote no. If you do agree, yes. Do we want a roll call vote or a voice vote?
The roll call.
All righty, and I'll just start with the order that I'm seeing everybody there. Councilman Worthy?
No.
Councilman Back?
No.
Councilman Wilson?
No.
Councilman Cannon?
I voted last week not to charge that guy. So, I'm gonna go with the way I did last week, no.
You're gonna vote no. Okay, Councilman Reed?
Oh.
And President Toz, I'm sorry, I skipped you.
I'll stay. She's a relative.
Okay. Very good. All right. The resolution fails to be adopted, so the lien will not be assessed against the property.
Madam President, I just want to make one thing clear. You, again, to reiterate what Mr. Back said, there's a good chance that you're telling the truth and that Mr. Harbison and his group are telling the truth. I think the difference is, Councilman Cannon, last week, the individual in question that we were talking about had several abatement issues that have come before this council, same individual. So, there's a little bit of a different precedent there. You had a repeat offender, so to speak, and it looks like. As far as I know, Ms. Scott, is this the first time you've had to deal with this situation? And it'll be the last time? Yes, ma'am.
I'm just glad we started getting all the pictures, get all this taken care of, so we won't have to be doing this anymore.
I agree. We just got to get through these old ones.
Well, it appears that if you come up here and say anything, we're not going to do it till you know.
Yeah.
Except this poor gentleman right here. And the church, I think we ought to go back and do the same thing we just did last, too. Let this be the end of that mess.
Yep.
And don't do this no more. This is kind of, I think we ought to go with his, to go back up.
Well, let's go, let's finish out this 927 Tuscaloosa Avenue. And 929 Tuscaloosa Avenue. Mr. Oden said he wasn't disputing it. He just didn't like the fact that he wasn't notified.
Well, Mr. Oden, I'll make two points real quick, and both your points. And Ms. Harbison, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city is actually only required to notify you one time a year. And after that, if they have to come back out and cut your grass again, they're not required to tell you again. If they send you that first letter, I think that's good for the whole year. And they reserve the right to maintain it after that. So, that's probably why you didn't get the second letter after you got the first one. And the other thing, as far as the cost goes, I do think that these fees are intended to be punitive in nature. There's, I think they're intended to deter people from being in this situation. So, it's not necessarily what you would pay another yard person to come out there and cut it. It's that plus a little bit of a penalty to make sure that nobody does it again. But again, I'm empathetic.
You really got off cheap because what is it now, Ms. Harbison? What do we charge now for cutting one this year?
We step on the property at one seventy-five.
One seventy-five, so you know, you got one thirty-six. And if they do it from now, it'll be one seventy-five.
There are also some administrative costs involved with assessing the lien, advertisement and mailing of postage fees and that kind of thing.
Mr. Oden, you mentioned that you had considered selling the property. Do you have any idea what the property's worth, what the value of it is? What you're trying to sell it for?
I can't figure out how to pay it with the right of rights. It's like two thousand, it's like two thousand nine hundred dollars, something like that. But I often said, all right, what is the right of law?
Well, I can just offer a suggestion, maybe consider. I know it's not ideal. You'd rather sell it. But it might be possible that you can consider conveying that property if you're not going to be able to come out and maintain it on a regular basis to keep this from happening over and over again. It may be possible to convey that property to the city or another entity like the land bank possibly, you know, to where you, it would take it off your hands, so you weren't having to maintain it. Something to consider. Yeah. I understand. Well, again, back to my point. I think if I'm not mistaken, they're only required to notify you once a year that there's an issue.
I don't think there's any problem. He's already said we probably could it.
Yeah.
But he's saying it's just too much. And I don't know that I disagree with that. So, advertising, administrative costs, costs balance.
So, what is the pleasure of the council on 929 Tuscaloosa Avenue?
Since he's not disputing it, I'm going to say move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt. Yes, sir.
You have to pay the hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's all. You just have to pay the hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's it.
And if at all possible, just try to ride down there every now and then and see if it needs cut. All right.
All right.
So, we have according to my count, I think that leaves twenty-five. We have twenty-five items that are left. And you all have them on your paper instead of me reading them all.
Yeah.
And there's no one here to dispute. So, what is the pleasure of the council?
Motion goes out, all twenty-five.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the twenty-five remaining resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all twenty-five.
Okay, now that we have adopted them, I know that they owe them. Will they be notified that they have to pay? Have they already been notified that they have, since we have adopted this?
I believe that, I don't believe there's any further notification. Mr. Harbison can correct me. The city clerk's office would proceed with recording the resolutions, which is a cost. So, we might wait a few days before doing that and check with the Building Department to see if any others have been paid. But the people can go to the third floor Building Department and make their payment. And that would save the city a little bit of money in having the resolution recorded. Once it's recorded, then it becomes a part of the property records with the county. And any title search that's done, that lien should show up.
All right. Is there anything else to come before the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, it has been motion and second to adjourn.